Okay, I am on, sorry.
Right at 7:30.
Okay, Councilor Joyner says she was coming. She normally.
I'm here. She is, she is. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this city council meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pardon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
All right, you have a call.
All right. This time, do I have a motion to allow Mr. Harris to participate remotely?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Is there any discussion? Mr. Harris, do you mind stating for the record where you're conducting the meeting from? And what your reasoning is?
From my home, for medical reasons.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. All right, we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Maker.
Good afternoon, City Council. Mr. Mayor, just like to welcome everybody out to the public hearing tonight. Tonight is an open public hearing. Tonight, we will be discussing the proposed tax rates. We have a presentation from our interim CFO, Mr. Russ Branson, who is online. Over the weekend, Russ and I have provided you with the requests from Thursday's meeting. At your desk, you see the incremental changes from 113 to 117. And so, the four incremental column that you have here is the recommended amount that we are proposing tonight. And before we get started, I would just like to say that the budget, the budget is balanced far as the operational budget. However, we're requesting tax increases for the capital budget. We have a lot of maintenance in the area of public works. Taxes have not been increased in over 10 years. And so, we are seeking a tax increase to help fund some of those capital projects that we have. Also, would like to mention that in 2021 and 2022, the previous administration also requested taxes. We do have outside vendors from the Robert Bob group here. After their assessment this year, they have also included, for the third year in a row, that taxes be increased. So, as I turn it over to Mr. Russ Branson to go through the project, to go through the PowerPoint presentation that we have tonight for the citizens and the council, I just want to make you aware that as we were on the DAS last Thursday, we had a major failure, road failure. And there was a news release to shut down the lanes on Winston Churchill Drive. And so, that is a cost that is pending, that we are not sure what that will be in the near future. So, there's a lot of things to be done in Hopewell. Mr. Branson, we're prepared for your presentation.
Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Maker. And I'm assuming the you're looking at, looking at the presentation I sent, tax increases. We're projecting for the budget for, on April 16th. And there's, it's actually a pretty short presentation. I have some slides from last week for reference. But let's look at slide number two, which would be recommended capital projects. And so, the difference between this slide and this similar slide in the presentation we had last Thursday is primarily, I've added in all the recommended projects here. So, last time, we talked about the, you know, kind of the minimum priority projects. And then, the recommended, which were primarily bringing in those bottom public works projects on the roads, which include pavement preservation arterials, Heretic Avenue, Wagner Road, which is a small project. We've also made some adjustments in that fire and police projects. We've, they're, they're small. And we realized we could actually fund them out of salary savings in those two programs this year. And so, have taken them out of next year's budget. We also reduced the community center HVAC from 250,000 to 50,000. Now, that is the, that is the first phase of what is needed to do. And I was been told by Tabitha, the Recreation Director, that that would be sufficient for this year. But the need for the bigger HVAC projects still remains. So, those costs get pushed out to another year. But this would be sufficient for what they need for the summer. And those are the prime, and then, oh, the last thing is the planning, which doesn't show up on this chart because it was the one thing they had left though. We're also funding the next year's portion of the of the the update for planning update in this year. And the wayfinding would kind of remain as the next year's project. So, what we have is, this was 2.4 million. If you look in the bottom right, the circled red number, this was 2.4 million. And in last, last week's presentation is now 300,000 with the adjustments that we've discussed. So, that's the main difference here. Same projects, just moved a little between, you know, what was prior, considered priority we had to have. And this is recommended projects. The next slide would be additional capital needs. So, these are projects that have been requested by the departments, but are not included in our recommended funding with tax increases shown before you tonight. You know, that adds another three and a half million. Some of those are in the public work side. Most are in the recreation side with the Riverwalk Phase Two being the largest piece of that. But the other big one is the 660,000 for the HVAC and the community center, which still will need to be funded here in the next year or two. And then, there's some IT projects and then the wayfinding on the development side. So, an additional 3.5, not included in terms of the funding recommendation here. But here, because these are the total capital requests that have been, that added by departments. So, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about increasing taxes and increasing fees. That's what we're talking about. If we go to slide number four. So, this is a little bit of an update, a little bit of change from what we saw last week. And let me, let me go through this. The, the top portion is the, the tax rates that we're, that are set by council, including, we include stormwater fees in there. It's not a tax, but it kind of functions like one, but it's a fee on a per parcel basis. We're recommending the addition of a cigarette tax. There's an increase to the lodging tax. And if you look at, so we have here what the taxes are. You know, what's the increase increment that we're looking at? So, for stormwater, we could do dollar parcel, up to $4 a parcel. Lodging tax, we'll get 2% based on council kind of direction last week. Food and beverage, the increment is 1%. I want to talk about food and beverage and lodging because I made a mistake on the last, on last Thursday's presentation. And I had mixed these two up. I had lodging as 175,000 and food and beverage as 75,000. If you look back at, you know, slide 13, which is later, that discussed those, did have it correctly. I had just transposed them when I put that table together. So, I apologize for that. That has been corrected here in terms of the amount you get from, you know, 1% on lodging is 75,000, and 1% food and beverage is 175. Food and beverage, just to, also to clarify, is just on prepared foods. It's not a sales tax in groceries. But, but, you know, we, we had recommended, you know, I do have the recommendation here from April 11th. And you see, that is the reverse amounts, but that's what we had in there. And so, we're, we have that and real estate tax. Those are the recommended taxes and fees. We did not recommend personal property machinery and tools tax. For tonight, and this is the gray, the gray section, the recommendation is still stormwater fees to increase by $4 a parcel. The cigarette tax, based on council direction, is to go up to 80 cents a pack. If we can do that, is a million. Lodging tax to 2% would only be $150,000, but that's the recommendation. Food and beverage, again, based on what we heard from council, we've dropped that tax. You can choose to add it back tonight. It's not in this recommendation we're talking about. And the real estate tax, we're, we're still recommending at 4 cent increase, which would go from 113 to 117 per $100 value on the real estate tax. Now, combined, those will bring in 2.84 million dollars is the forecast for this. And so, then, how does that work in terms of what our need is? So, down in the bottom left-hand corner, so here's the, how the recommended capital funding looks. And again, compared to, let's look at April 11th. We were recommending, it was 3.1 million dollars of funding. We had 618,000 already programmed in the budget. We're talking about including stormwater, you know, increasing stormwater fees by 900,000, increased taxes by 1.5, getting a little more operation savings to kind of fund that 3.1 million. That was the recommendation. We've made some changes to that here. And that's, we've, you know, again, some of the, we've made some changes. The 3 million, we're down a little, but partly, if you look, we're also down on what's in the budget. That is because there's $119,000 of, that the fire department had in the capital plan to pay the lease on existing fire trucks. And that really, it's an operational cost. So, we've moved that into operations, which has reduced the amount available. We've also cut an additional 50,000 from the finance budget. So, that helps a little bit. There may be other savings coming in from other departments, we'll see. Stormwater fee's still at 900,000. And then, the increased other taxes, which would, is primarily, right, cigarette tax and real estate tax with some additional lodging to get 1.9 million. Now, that provides you, if you get all of those, that provides you, right, based on this math, if we get, if our forecast is exactly right, on all those things, we'd have an additional 334,000 that we could put towards reserves, doing other capital projects or something else, right? So, it's a little over that, that specific capital need right now. But it can fund those other capital projects that have been requested or do something like a reserve. And then, we have just what the, if the, what the full request is, if we, if you did everything we asked, which is the same kind of thing, and try to fund everything, you're about 3.2 million dollars short, right? So, it's at 3 and a half million minus the 330,000. So, that's the, that's the context of what we're doing. So, it's not a, not a big shift from last week, primarily increasing what we're wanting to get, a cigarette tax, correcting my mistake on this lodging tax amount, and dropping requests for the food and beverage tax. So, those are not too different. And it provides, gets you to about the same place. So, the recommended on their little box, just to summarize, we're increasing, you know, we're recommending increase in stormwater fees to $8 a parcel a month. We're gonna have to come back to you with that. Again, there's some, the analysis for that is being done by Public Works right now. But to increase the lodging tax up to 10% or of room rate, and to increase real estate tax by 4 cents, which is a 3 and a half percent increase in terms of the rate for the 2024 tax year. So, the, the primary action that we need tonight is what you want to do in the real estate tax rate. Because we need to, we'll then take that, whatever that, whatever that decision is. And we'll, we'll need that to start the process of getting the bills out for the June 15th tax payment. And we want to give everybody at least a month to have those bills to make those tax payments. So, that, that starts tomorrow with whatever your decision is. But we, we do need that decision. And the lodging tax, you know, that's not as critical, but it's also not as much money. So, then, I, the other things I have, the other PowerPoint slides are ones I went over last weekend, or last Thursday, that just show the, these, the various taxes you, you know, the rates you control and provide information about those. I don't think I need to go over those again, but thought it'd be helpful for you to have those for reference as you're thinking about tonight. And I also believe separately, you know, I think you should have received something that would give you just each of those, each of the taxes or fees, the value of each increment, right? A dollar or a percent, or whatever that is. And then, a couple of columns to, if you want to have, you know, mix and match what those are. Because I, mine are just in the, you know, increments going to the lowest to the highest there. But to give you ability to do some of that math on your own as you debate what you want to do tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'll obviously be on throughout to provide input.
Okay. First slide that I have is Counselor Holloway.
Thank you again for the presentation. I see you said you had corrected the lodging tax. I was asking last week for the total amount of taxes that they pay on lodging. Because I know usually, like, when I go to hotels, they're usually like 13% total. Do you know what the state and federal tax are?
Oh, I don't know what the state. Typically, lodging is just a local tax, but sometimes there are other taxes on there. I, I don't know offhand. I know that, you know, that you, that around here, 8%, Petersburg is 10%. Most other areas, cities are 8%. But I don't know any additional, what, any additional rates, if they're placed on there. I don't think, federal government does not do a tax on lodging. The state might, but typically, this is just a local tax.
Okay. I definitely know there's multiple taxes on there. I guess we'll have to find that out. The, what was the other thing? The real estate, I know is different from the, of course, the personal property. But still, I recommend against it because it's still the taxes. The citizens have already carried the burden of the increase in taxes last year. So, I, I don't agree with those taxes, the real estate taxes at all. But, but lodging, I think we can come up with a comparable number between, I guess, the one and a half or more with that, in my opinion. Cigarette taxes at the 60 cent per pack. And an increase for the stormwater fee at about $2, which would bring us 452,000 dollars. Last week, as you were giving presentation, I wanted to get some clarification. Is this something that the city, the, the raise on taxes, is this something that the city is looking at for a one-time raise and returning to a lower rate next year? Or is this something that's proposed to be a continual set rate?
On, on the real estate tax?
On all of the taxes.
Oh, yeah, and all the taxes. You know, I think lodging would probably, if you move it up, it'll probably stay there unless there's, you know, I guess, some major issue or finding with it. But I don't think there would be. You know, cigarette tax, again, I think, you know, the, the, you know, we can always look at what's going on. But we think that would stay in place unless there's some reason to not. You know, real estate tax is one. The other dynamic you have is a reassessment. And so, that's one, if you, if you go up this year, which kind of, you know, keeps pace with what inflation has been, that 3.3%, that, you know, there's a reassessment that you could, you'll have this discussion of, you know, you could bring it rate back down if that reassessment, you know, is high enough that you, again, want to keep the increase in total down to a lower rate. You have that option, and we'll be back before you discussing that next year.
Absolutely. Well, again, I hope my fellow colleagues would totally vote against the real estate tax. The other tax, including food and beverage, given some increase, even, even though that's a big much, but it's not for groceries, it's for going out to eat. But
Correct.
Real estate taxes versus something that our citizens can choose to do. I can choose to go out to eat this week and not go out to eat next week and eat at home versus them not having the opportunity or choice when it comes to real estate taxes. So, I am totally against increasing the real estate taxes in a suffering economy where our citizens have already been hit last year, not with an increase in tax rate. However, the increase in the assessment value has caused them to pay more in taxes. So, I'm totally against that. I yield, thank you.
Okay. I did not see, oh, Counselor Pelham.
What, what did you say about the 150,000 from finance? Was that from the finance department or what did you say?
Yeah, 50,000 from finance department.
You found it where?
That, that was in the assessment office. And again, it was, the assessor who just left had, had put some monies in for things that we don't think we need now. And we've taken out, we took out the money for, you know, an outside assessment firm. And there's another 50,000 in there that we kind of looked at and said, we don't need that either. So, it was just looking back at our, all the budgets. And that's what we found.
Okay. And I do agree with Counselor Holloway that I'm, I'm not inclined to vote for any property, real estate increase this year. If we find that we need it next year, that would be the time to do it. If the city is budgeted, we, once you will be this positive and it's just for capital assets, we just have to carry it over till we get the money in hand and not put that burden, again, as you said, on the citizens. I like a planning and I like of not to detail. Should not be cast on the backs of our citizens. So, I agree that we should not increase the property tax. I would agree with all the, the $2 balance for the stormwater fees and the cigarette tax, luxury tax, and food and beverage. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments before we open up the public hearing? Okay. Seeing no lights, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement? Or, you need, oh, you want, this was your sheet?
Oh, you, you want it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll read it. All right. "Each person addressing the council shall step to the microphone, give their name, locality, and phone number, and limit comments to three minutes or less. No person shall be permitted to address council a second time unless all others have been heard once. And no one shall speak more than twice on any subject in any one meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than council and the person having the floor shall enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of council without permission of the mayor. No questions shall be asked of a council member, including administration, except through the presiding officer." First person that I have signed up.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Before we read from them, I have one citizen who emailed me their comment.
Okay. Yeah, you can go ahead and read that one.
This one's from Catherine Podlousky. Her email reads, "Good evening, council. My name is Catherine Podlousky. I live in Ward One. I live right up the street between First Baptist Church and the nursing home. I have kept an eye on property values in my little triangle neighborhood for years as we have been a focus for development and multiple comprehensive plans. I believe the biggest gripe from Hopewell property owners is in, is the 2023 real estate reassessments with their wildly divergent and illogical values. So, any real estate tax increase is going to cause complaints. My real estate value went up a third, yet my house hasn't been renovated in years. First Baptist Properties, the actual church and surrounding lives and houses didn't go up much. Then, they had an appeal and got the assessments lowered. My question to the real estate assessor's office as to some explanation, explained nothing. Hopewell citizens are feeling used to cover whatever mystery finance situation has happened over the past years. Clearly, too many unanswered questions are adding to the feeling. Thank you, Catherine Podlousky."
Okay. First person that I have signed up to speak in person. I have a hard time reading the first name, but I think it might be a Earlene Allen?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I've been living in Hopewell for 54 years.
Ma'am, can you state your name in the mic and which ward you live in?
My name is Earlene Allen. I live 1818 Stewart Avenue, Hopewell, Virginia.
Okay.
I've been living there for 54 years. I have asked for a rate cut and I couldn't get it because I had a little $20,000 in the bank and they denied me. So, I live on a fixed income. I live alone and I struggle every month. And I do not want the taxes, the rate taxes to go up. Because I'm struggling there, trying to make end meats right now. I don't get no help. That's my comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, I think, is Mary. I can't make out the last name. It's one before Mary Crockett.
Gibbs, it's Gibbs.
Gibbs, okay.
Arnold, Miss Gibbs.
I'm Mary Gibbs. I live in 1820 Stewart Avenue, Hopewell, Virginia. I'm here, wondering why the real estate and personal problem tax keep going up. And I'm on a fixed income. And I can't afford the, the taxing. So, I gotta choose between taxing and grocery. And that is hard. And that's all that I came down for.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mary Crockett.
I don't have a question. Counselor Holloway has already addressed the question.
Okay, thank you. Next is Mr. Gervin.
So, I'm Andy Gervin with Advance Six, the Hopewell plant, right here up the street in Ward Two. Phone number 541-5734. So, Mayor Pardon, Vice Mayor Gore, Hopewell City Council. My name is Andy Gervin. I'm the plant manager of Advance Six, represents over 750 direct employees working in the city of Hopewell. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Hopewell Manufacturers Association, which includes Advance Six, Ashland, Ivannick, Mylar Specialty Films, Hopewell Generation, Virginia American Water, and West Rock. Thank you for this opportunity. Collectively, we acknowledge our role as proud and active members of the Hopewell community to advocate for responsible physical operations within the city of Hopewell. And we support the services that the city and its citizens rely upon, including first responders and public work. and its citizens rely upon, including first responders and public works. We also support the need of the city to balance the budget as physical responsibility is core to the government's, just as it is for business. However, we believe that the city's budget needs to be funded in alignment with needs of the citizens in the manner that supports the growth of Hopewell economic vitality. The proposal to significantly increase taxes rates not only negatively impacts businesses, but it can also create hardships for many members of the community, including many of our employees who live in the Hopewell. A tax increase without sufficient advance notice can wreak havoc and burden our, the personal finances and ability to manage day-to-day expenses, spend in the community, and save for the future. This further, further intensifies by inflation and increase in perp- personal property value. The same concerns apply to industry. Tax increases such as those proposed serve as a disincentive for industry to make continued investments in assess- assets located in Hopewell. We, with increased costs of energy, steel, and other materials, we too feel the burden of inflation and the costs we manage as we plan our operations, the maintenance and growth investments at our facilities. In addition, the proposed tax increase will impact the ability of the city to effectively manage its budget during a critical time when there is so much focused on developing policies and encourage physical responsibilities and economic stimulus and growth within the city. Therefore, we request that you vote against the tax increases. I would also like to take this opportunity to note that industry has been a partner to the city of Hopewell, paying significant taxes and participating in the Hopewell Water Renewal Commission, with meaningful financial investments to support the critical infrastructure needed for the citizens of Hopewell. Through the Hopewell Water Renewal Commission, we've worked together to approve over thirty-two million dollars in investments over the past six years, although only fifteen million of those dollars have been spent actually to date. We would like to highlight that eighty-five percent of these expenses were to industry. Capital improvements is needed to be funded in alignment with the city's ability to execute projects. I would encourage the council to evaluate its budget and fund what needs to be and can in fact and realistically be executed during the upcoming fiscal year. We continue to assert that machinery and tool is a foundational metric that supports local economic development and is the factor that impacts business decisions in investing in existing operations within the city. Raising taxes simply to cover short-term budget requirements will have long-term impacts on the overall economic development and growth in the city. The continued investment by industry is critical and its critical assets such as machinery and tool serves to reinforce the economic foundation of the region and is essential to its continued economic growth. Therefore, we request that you vote against the tax increase as proposed and maintain existing rates from the current year, uh, twenty-four. We look forward to the continued partnership with the city of Hopewell to su- support the economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Dana Newcomer.
Good evening. Dana Newcomer. I'm with the Hopewell, Hopewell Prince George Chamber, which is in.
Speaking in mic.
Which is in Ward Seven. Um, technically you represent all the wards though. Um, so Mayor Parton and Vice Mayor Gore and City Council. Um, again, my name is Dana Newcomer and I'm speaking on my role as, uh, Board President on behalf of our membership of the, of the Hopewell Prince George Chamber of Commerce. Um, our, our organization represents three hundred members and over ten thousand employees working in the region, and we thank you for the opportunity to speak to them. We have watched with interest the continuing work of the Robert Bob Group and its interaction with the City Council. Previously, our membership has expressed concern over the current fiscal management challenge. However, has never retreated from a commitment supporting sustainable improvement for the city of Hopewell. The chamber remains resolved to sustaining and growing business opportunities in Hopewell and appreciates the work the, the Robert Bob Group has done in partnership with the City Council. Now, the proposal to increase tax rates negatively impacts our members who are already dealing with inflation and increased costs of maintaining their businesses. A tax increase is detrimental if it hasn't been properly planned for, posing a substantial burden on business finances and the ability to manage day-to-day expenses. Tax increases serve as a distinct, um, disinvent, disincentive, excuse me, disincent, disincentive for businesses to make continued investments in Hopewell. We urge you to reconsider increases in taxes and encourage you to review carefully the cascading impact the proposed tax increases would have on our city, its broader population, and its small business community. Specifically, our members express concern regarding the cigarette tax and lodging tax and the projected impacts to our local convenience store members and our hospitality and tourism members. Those members work hard every day to attract additional visitors to our community. A lodging tax rate of ten percent places Hopewell in an unfavorable position of being the top, of being in the top ten highest lodging tax rate of all localities in Virginia, serving as a competitive disadvantage. Also, we kindly remind council that per state code, three percent of its tax, this tax rate, uh, revenues must be spent on hospitality and tourism within the locality. Tax rates are a foundational, foundational metric that supports or detracts from local economic development. Raising taxes, um, to cover budget requirements will have those long-term impacts to the overall economic development and the growth of the city. Therefore, we are requesting that you vote against, uh, proposed tax increases to maintain existing rates for our, for the past fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And we've, we look forward to continuing to partner with the city of Hopewell and to support the economic growth. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next, I think it's Marcus Allen?
Yes, I have, uh, Councilor Holloway, Mrs. Puff, I'm already informed by.
Okay. Diane Barnett?
That's Karen.
Oh. Okay. All right. Uh, Pat Ham?
She covered some of it. She covered most of it.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mark Burrows?
Good evening. My name's Mark Burrows. I'm in Ward Three. Excuse me. Thank both y'all for vo- vocalizing opposition to a real estate tax increase. Chesterfield County pays point nine, or ninety cents on a hundred dollars. Prince George is at eighty-two cents. Y'all are proposing to go up to one dollar and seventy-five cents? Did I hear that correct?
One seventeen.
One seventeen, sorry. By the way, Hopewell ain't that special. Not when you compare it to the neighboring areas. Um, second of all is, we have now paid Robert Bob Group two point three million dollars to fix a mistake that either y'all or your predecessors created. That two point three million dollars that has been paid to them would almost make up the deficit that the gentleman was talking about through the computer earlier. Why are we gonna be shouldered with y'all's burden? That is y'all's responsibility to fix, not ours, regardless of what tax you wanna increase. Y'all's. Find the money, apply for grants, beg, steal, borrow, do whatever you gotta do. Back in December or November, we heard from a young Marine veteran who was losing her house to the new home assessments here in Hopewell. She was being foreclosed on because she couldn't afford the new tax rate of the new assessment. And now y'all are talking about a tax increase. These two ladies right here earlier were talking about the same thing, having to choose between groceries and mortgages. That is not fair for y'all as a city council to put the residents of this city in. That is not a fair position. It's not fair for y'all to have to ask them between going on food stamps or, or going hungry or keeping their home. You keep raising these rates, watch how quickly people hop their hind parts, cross that bridge, or right up, uh, or right down south under Prince George, and y'all will have no business, y'all will have no residence, and nobody to tax at all. Thank y'all.
Uh, next is a Dwayne A., I can't make out the last name. Okay. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak tonight that did not sign up?
Wally Raycliff, Ward Four. Been in Hopewell fifty-eight years, and everything's going up. We don't need this. It, it just don't make sense. It needs to be cut somewhere else or in Stan. Eighty cents a pack on cigarettes? I don't even smoke. They're just gonna go across, they're gonna go to Petersburg, they're gonna go somewhere else and buy. It, it just don't make any sense. Y'all need to cut fat somewhere else and make up the difference. All right, thank you.
Hey, Howser, Ward Five. Uh, the citizens of Hopewell can't keep getting taxes increased. They can't afford it. Over the past several months, I've donated a lot of my time to volunteering organizations that feed citizens in this area, whether it be Barnetton Williams, whether it be Destination Church, or the biggest one Beacon Hill Church giving away food. When you're giving away food, three to five, six hundred citizens a day at these things, it's because, guess what? They go lacking on food money. They gotta pay their bills, they gotta pay their insurance, they gotta pay their mortgage. Well, they go short on food. And these companies are, these, uh, organizations are having to cover this difference. Thank God for that. You know, and then you're talking about going up eighty cent on a pack of cigarettes. Well, I can go right across the bridge, get them cheaper. While I'm over there, I can fill my tank up with gas, and I can grocery shop. So I'm spending my three, four, five, six hundred dollars across the bridge and I'd even spend it in Hopewell. That's the choice y'all gotta make.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak that did not sign up tonight? No? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Um, uh, Councilor Denton?
Um, yes. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Speaking in mic.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommended tax ordinance.
As proposed in the.
As, as.
As in the, um, resolution?
As presented.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Yeah, they got a resolution that's presented to us.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll second it. All right. Councilor Holloway?
I had my lights on at first before she, uh.
No. Counselor Denton had hers on.
No, no. I ain't talking about before her. I'm talking about before she made the motion. I, I just said wanted to comment. Are you asking me for just comment?
Yeah, you, yeah.
Discussion on this?
Correct.
All right.
On this motion.
Yeah, I, I, again, I disagree, I definitely disagree with it. I agree wholeheartedly with the, uh, last commentator, well, all of the commentators and especially the last one, uh, Mr. Howser. It, it, uh, it is certainly true. Uh, you know, where I stopped to get gas, I stopped the grocery shop, literally, you know, where. You can be buying a pack of cigarettes across the bridge, you can go what's convenient, especially when you got a household to take care of. You just get off of work and you ready to go. Um, so I, I, I don't, I also, um, I, I asked the question to our finance director, who, um, was the one who proposed this in the first place last week in public? Were there any other avenues? And his response to us was yes. Um, there are o- other avenues. Um, and if there's something that we need majorly, um, just like we did a couple months ago, I think we have like seventeen million dollars in investment accounts, uh, that we could utilize if there was any type of emergency or something that was necessary, um, like they're proposing tonight for their citizens, there are other options. Um, this isn't the only option. Uh, some, some counselors are just outright ignoring the fact that people are on hard times, and that can only make my heart and mind think, are you trying to push those citizens out of the city, which I would certainly hope not. But again, I pray that somebody would, uh, you know, that was, as money answereth all things, but the love of it is the root of all evil. And I pray that we will get our head out of the air sometimes, sit back, come back to the table, have an understanding that we should not increase the suffering on our cities, citizens. That can unfortunately cause, um, more mental issues and distress and cause, I mean, send people right off edge. Some people are right on the edge when it comes to finances. And I pray, uh, that the City Council would, uh, understand that. And again, my closing remark again, the Director of Finances who proposed this said himself that there are other avenues that we can take without increasing the taxes. Thanks so very much.
Okay. Uh, I think the light was Vice Mayor Gore? Okay.
Sorry. Um, I, I'm not gonna speak for long because I kinda made my position clear, uh, at our last meeting last week. And also I've been saying the same thing for the last two years in regards to this issue. For those who actually follow council and come to the meetings or even watch us online, um, you may remember this conversation being had two years ago when we knew this was coming. Uh, when we looked at some of the issues that we did not know were issues at the time. I have to say the seat manager's put in a really awkward and compromising position because quite frankly, her administration is having to deal with old issues that were unresolved. And so that goes back to the gentleman's comment in regards to, um, having people pay for other people's messes. Uh, and that was the exact comment that I said on Tuesday, um, or is it Tuesday, Thursday, in regards to my position on this matter. Um, I definitely think there's other things we can be addressing, such as contracts, um, how money is spent in this city, and delinquency, and some other items that I believe, um, should be addressed first prior to this. Um, but quite frankly, it's years of poor governing that led us here. Um, and it just falls in certain people's laps. So with that, I didn't speak earlier because again, it was a little, last week was a little interesting, so I don't wanna have a bad meeting in regards to, um, getting worked up on the matter. So I'll just say that I too, uh, disagree with increasing taxes for the reasons stated. Um, hopefully I don't have to go into detail, but, um, just say I agree with, echo the sentiments that's been shared thus far by Councilor Holloway, Councilor Pellon, and the members of the public.
Okay. Are there any other lights or questions? Uh, Councilor Pellon?
Um.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to say, uh, one thing about the city taxes, we always compare it with Prince George and Chesterfield. Chesterfield and Prince George has land and many more businesses that we don't have in the city. And so where most counties can charge below the dollar rate for their property taxes, they also have assessments of houses that started a quarter of a million dollars, three hundred mil- three hundred thousand and above. Houses that are assessed at a million dollars in fact. So it's kinda hard to compare Hopewell with the counties. It, it's just no comparison. Compare us to the cities, Petersburg, Richmond, and, and throughout Virginia, and the tax rate is, is comparable in some, in some ways. But again, uh, because the, the budget is balanced with what our needs are in taking care of the employees. We give the employees a two and a half percent with cola, I guess, whatever it is. And everybody's been taking care of, and it's, it's time for us to take care of our citizens like, uh, some of the councils have already forced stated. But, uh, no real estate tax. Uh, with that, I would just, I don't know how we gonna get to the bottom line. I'm not gonna vote for, I'm gonna vote no straight out for the, to increase all of these taxes. And that's what her vote, uh, her motion encumbers, of raising the taxes to a dollar seventeen, raising the stormwater fee to four dollars, raising the cigarette tax to eighty. raising the cigarette tax to eighty cent, and raising lodging to one-and-a-half, one percent. And that, that's a lot of money. So, I absolutely would say no to that motion and entertain a substitute motion, but not right now. I'll see how that goes first.
Okay. Alright, are there any other lights or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gore?
No.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
No.
Councilor Holloway?
No.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero, I mean, four to three, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alright, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no motion to adjourn, if you don't mind, Mayor Parton.
Uh, okay. Um, yeah, do I have a motion to make an amendment to the agenda for a special occasion?
So moved.
Okay, uh, motion, alright.
The e, the email that you responded to?
Okay.
So, the motion is to amend the agenda for special recognition. Um, it's been made and properly seconded. Are there any lights or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Oh, I had to think, I'm sorry. I got confused. Yeah, yes, I'm looking at this real estate again.
Councilor Joyner? Yes. Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, alright, you wanna go ahead?
Alright, so, um, I'd like to ask, I, I know this is unfortunate that this has to happen at this meeting. Um, but members of council, will you please, uh, meet, line up down here at the front? Um, while the mayor is going center, um, I can carry this with him. I just wanna say that, uh, we are going to be losing a gem tonight. This is her last official council meeting as our city attorney. Um, it has been a joy to work with you. And I know members of council will be able to share some remarks, um, soon. But I ask for all members of council to come down and also the city attorney as well. Um, part of our tradition is to, uh, issue a thank you on behalf of the city. And so, tonight, will be, meet us downstairs, and we'll downstairs, down there. We will provide that to you. And then, if any members of council would like to give you any remarks, I'll reserve votes. Um, besides saying, you've done a remarkable job in difficult situations. And I'm looking forward to your success at the next jurisdiction that you're representing. And I'll pass it over to the mayor to do the official part.
And so, Danielle? Oh, okay. Uh, we just wanted to say thank you, uh, for your service here with the city of Hopewell. Um, I know it's been a, a difficult job, um, and unfortunately, we had to do it under a, a less-than-exciting meeting. Uh, but we do wanna present you with a small, uh, token. And then also, um, as tradition, uh, with, um, our employees on City Council and our, uh, directors, uh, Ed Hatch, uh, painting of the city, I believe it's called, uh, Nature and Industry in Harmony.
My camera's newer. One, two, three. Alright, one more. One, two, three.
Is there anything that you'd like to say?
Just a pleasure to serve this, this city of Hopewell. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I'm gonna miss you all, but I'll be far away. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, did you say that or did who said?
No, let's, I was like, let's wait till we get back up our seats.
Alright, motion on the floor is to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton? Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway? Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Councilor Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Okay.